The first three items on the agenda are all going to be presented by Jason Petites and Molly Alliger in Parks and Rec. And so with that, we will jump right in. And Jason, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Karen. Good evening, Council. So before we begin, I just want to say that, you know, in recent years, if we can claim any success in the Parks Department, it's down to the excellent employees that we've been able to hire. People that are passionate about what they do, appreciate the opportunity to work at our great city and come with a great skill set. And tonight, I want to introduce Council to our latest member. That's Molly Alliger. Molly is officially our office administrator here, and part of her duties are going to be running the cemetery, looking at grant funding, and generally just helping us be better, you know, at what we do administratively. And tonight, she's going to talk to Council about that honorary street designation program. So over to Molly.
Hi, good evening. Um, okay, so as you know, the honorary street name designation policy was adopted in August of last year. And it was created to afford the opportunity for citizens to honor deceased individuals who made significant contributions to Jacksonville Beach. Recently, staff received seven applications for this program, and they're specifically for fallen wartime military veterans, vets who were killed in action either in World War II or Vietnam. With these applications, we received some specific requests that our current policy does not accommodate. The first one being that the signs will be royal blue in color rather than brown. Royal blue was chosen because there are other communities in the nation who are doing a program like this, and they're all using the royal blue color. So just create that continuity between those communities. Also, to waive the $400 application fee if the applicant can provide their own street sign. Waive the letter of consent from the honorary's state representative if they cannot be found after a good faith effort. Intermer-- excuse me, remove the five-year term stipulation to be more permanent, of course, with City Council reserving the right to change or amend that sign time. So staff recommends that we accommodate those amendments to our current policy, and we just need direction from City Council to see if you concur with those proposed amendments.
Do any members of the Council have any comments or questions or like further clarification?
Looks like Sandy's up first.
I'm not seeing the raised hand, so apologize.
Sandy's up.
I'll work on that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I had a, I just had a question, Molly. Welcome, welcome to the team, first of all. Thank you for, thank you for all that you're doing. And so just remind me, because I think in our, in what we passed, and this, it may cover this, but with the fallen wartime veterans, is there anything that we require the applicants to do that just provides additional information that would show that, you know, yes, they lived in Jack's Beach, or their connection to Jack's Beach?
Well, since we haven't had any applications before this, we're kind of on the fly, but we do have on the applications where they resided in Jacksonville Beach. And there was another piece of the application that also proved their military presence and that they were killed in action.
Okay, perfect. Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure that, and I thought we, I thought we had that, but I, I needed you to help remind me.
Yeah, and that is, that's for, that's the policy for everyone, veteran or not.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Fernando, you want to go?
Molly, a question. You said it's for fallen veterans like World War II and Vietnam. What about, is it also for those that serve in Operation Endure Freedom and all those?
Yes, the applications that we received specifically World War II or Vietnam this time around, but it's any combat period for the US at any point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, just real quick, I can't, I can't bring my hand down for some reason. I don't have the icon anymore. Does, is everybody else in the, seeing the same thing, or is it just me?
I can see my, I can see the lower hand at the bottom of mine.
I think your hand is down, ma'am.
I just lowered yours.
Yeah, but now I don't have the icon anymore, so.
Now you don't have it anymore?
Yeah, okay, that's fine. I'll just raise my hand.
See if you can put your cursor over the screen, it might pop back up. That's right. I just had a question about the cost of installation. I know you said if they supply the sign, that it would be, it would be, we wouldn't charge the $400, but I guess there is a cost of installation, and how do we make sure that the signs are all going to be exactly the same if we're, that they're going to the exact same vendor, and they're all, they're all in conformance with each other?
We've been working with Public Works on that. We do have a standardized sign and color, or size, excuse me, and color. So that's something that we can work with Public Works moving forward, just to make sure that they are all uniform.
Okay, and the cost actually of installation, you know, that's probably actually a couple hundred dollars. I mean, if it, if we feel it's nominal, I mean, I guess we can, we don't need to, we don't need to do it because it's no money out of pocket, actually. So I just wanted to, you know.
Well, and that's to City Council, if, you know, you don't want to change or amend that piece.
Well, I might be, I might be all right in reducing the cost of it. I mean, how much is the, how much does the sign cost? Do we have, do we get a quote?
Sorry? I don't know, I would have to find out for you the cost of the actual sign itself, but Public Works has offered to install them for free.
Okay, how do, how did we come up with the $400 cost for the program?
That I'll have to find out for you. It was adopted before I came on, so.
Is Jason around, or somebody else?
So Vice Mayor, yes, we, in our initial, when we developed the policy, we worked with Public Works, and we did make some inquiries as to the cost of the sign. The 400 was actually an amount we came about that would replace one sign during the term. So it covered the maintenance of the sign, if you will. It didn't cover the installation because Public Works was going to do that.
Okay, and I guess if, if we put them up, so it's only going to be on one street sign, so if there's a street that has multiple intersections, is it going to be on multiples, is it going to be on the signs throughout, the street signs throughout that whole corridor, or only on one location? And I guess my other question is, if they're damaged or stolen, who's responsible for replacing them?
Do you want to handle that? So.
Back with me if you don't have any answers, but.
No, the policy stipulates that we would only allow on one, one location for the entire street, so we couldn't have multiple signs all along the street. Who's responsible for when they get damaged? That was what we incorporated with the $400 charge. So we work with the fallen veterans to let them know if the sign is damaged or need replacing, since they provided it, they would provide a new sign.
Okay, and so that, that term was for five years, so now if we're looking at a indefinite period for that sign, it seems like there would be multiple replacements every, every couple of years.
Yes, and that was part of our discussion with them, that they would be responsible to maintain those signs and the replacement thereof.
Okay, great, thank you, Jason.
I don't see any other raised hands. Does anyone else have a hand raised, or any questions, or additional comments?
Oh, real, real quick, um, I guess Councilmember Nichols kind of brought up my point, is I just want to make sure that we have consistent signs. That's, that's important. I'm fine if the applicant provides them, but as long as they're consistent, I don't want eight vendors supplying the signs, because then there's going to be a huge level of inconsistency. I know you said that you require some military proof. I would just like to make sure that's buttoned up because of all the instances of stolen valor and all that kind of stuff. I just want to make sure that we do have good proof. And last, is there, it just, it's might be, this might be a hard one to answer, since we don't have Council right now, but with waiving the letter of consent, just want to make sure that nothing negative could come back if we put a sign up with somebody's name, and then the family finds out about it through an eighth party, and they become upset that they were not contacted. So I have a little bit of hesitation on that one. But that's, that would be it.
Jason or Molly, did you have anything to add?
No, I think we have the direction that we needed.
Okay, okay. So if no Councilmembers have any additional comments or questions, and staff has the direction we need, we'll move on to the next topic, which is also, I believe, represented by Molly.
Yes. And so this is about the Memorial Tree and Bench Program, and that was adopted in December of 2019, and was provided to offer the opportunity for the public to offer tribute to remember beloved individuals or pets or what have you. Recently, we received a request to place a memorial bench on the beach. However, per our current policy, there are only 11 approved locations within the Jacksonville City Beach Parks for this program. So we looked into it. I know there's a bench in Atlantic Beach, and we spoke to them, and they currently do not have a formal program that provides support for putting benches on the beach. They're all either on the west side of the dunes or in their designated parks. And the DEP also has a statute saying that we can't place any permanent structures on the beach. So we're just looking for directions to see if we should amend our current policy to add locations, including the beach access points on the west side of the dunes. And if so, should we limit how many per access point and so on?
Okay, Councilmember Dumont, did you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, I've been in touch with this individual, and he's very passionate about this, and I did contact Atlantic Beach as well, and really, they don't have, that's not their policy. So I contacted the resident again, and I did let him know, we can put it on the west side of the dune if Council amends the policy to allow it in certain beach access points, but not on others. And you'd also have to think about setbacks. So there are some, specifically in the south end of the beach, that are very narrow, so obviously they're not able to accommodate a bench. But if you look at it with setbacks and not having them on an end zone, there's, there are limited places where these benches could be located in the beach access to get onto the beach. I also discussed with him that I would float the idea with all of you about, and this is something that there would be, there's definitely a cost involved with this piece, is having, but his concern is he really wants to be able to see the ocean from the bench in the honor of his son. And so we are in the process of redoing those dune walkovers. So if there's some areas that we could put a bench on the walkover, like a little bump out, so there could be seating on the dune walkover, so he could, you know, somebody who decides to pay to have that bench memorialized, would still be able to see the ocean. That said, that would definitely be an increased cost to the beach walkover and we'd, to the dune walkovers, and so we'd need to get a costing or cost analysis of that, and I wouldn't ask the staff to do that until there was agreement with the Council that that would be something that we'd be interested in as well. And as I noted, that is, that wouldn't be every walkover, it would be certain walkovers with, within the city.
And Vice Mayor Nichols?
Thanks. I, I know the one that I live by, and if there was one there, there would be somebody sleeping on it at all times. I mean, I understand, I think if, you know, if you can see the ocean, and, and I guess there's a, there's a rationale for that, but, you know, at the couple of the areas that I'm thinking of that are not at end zones, that it really doesn't make a lot of, it doesn't make a lot of sense to have a seating place there, just because people are just going to pile stuff when they're walking to the beach or walking back. If you can figure out a way to where you can see the beach, I might be open to the, to that. I mean, I don't mind the, the modification to the, to, to new walk, dune walkovers in the future. I think that's, that's not a bad idea, and then you could put a little plaque on it or something, but there definitely would be a pretty substantial cost to doing that. And I guess the people that were wanting to do it would have to kind of maybe incur those costs. But I, I just don't, I don't see a lot of sense in, in placing benches on the west side of dunes unless, I, I mean, I just know at ours, we have a lot of crime in that area, and it would just perpetuate a lot of, a lot of challenges.
I appreciate what you're, your point, and where you are, you, your access wouldn't be a, be a place for a bench, there's no, there's no room for one. The areas that we'd look at for the bench, there are five or six in South Jack's Beach that have plenty of land to be able to accommodate, almost like a mini park, so as people get off the beach, they can just gather up their stuff, brush off the sand. Chet knows a lot of those areas well, so it's that, not those single walkovers, that's just a sidewalk.
Yeah, I actually drove by today. On my way to lunch, I took the scooter, which I'm sure some of y'all would love, but I think it's 36th and like 31st or so, right in there, I can't remember now. 30th, thank you. There's, there's space, and I think I would be open to considering benches there. The, the, the issue that I see, if we were to do something on the walkovers, is that it would have to be done so far in advance of time for somebody to pay for the additional bench space on the walkover, and then we've already got a plan to redo them. So then what happens three years from now, four years from now, when we've done the walkovers, and somebody says, oh, I want to put a bench? Well, now we, he's not able to, so now that kind of creates an unfair situation if you have one person who did it and maybe didn't. But I think if we came up with a list of like 30th and 36th, and some of those where we could allow benches, I, I think that would actually be a positive thing. So I think we'd have to have specific ones, and then we'd have to really decide which ones those would be. But I definitely don't like the end zones, and I don't think you can say no more than 25%. I think you have to say specific accesses that would be allowed. And right off the top of the head, the two that we just mentioned would be it, but we'd have to have a specific list.
No, I, I agree with being very specific about it and not do a car launch kind of deal.
Counselor Golding, you had your hand raised?
Thank you. I, so I've seen some benches that Neptune Beach has put on the west side of the dunes. You can't really see the ocean from there. In Atlantic Beach, it's really kind of unique, because the place where Atlantic Beach has benches on the west side of the dune, it's in the northern part of Atlantic Beach where the, where it's very elevated, and they have like maybe six benches there, kind of staggered, but all those benches can act, they have a view of the ocean. And I guess, Georgette, since this is something that you've looked into more, I just don't know, do we have, I don't, I'm not sure that we have any locations that have that kind of elevation on the west side of the dune. Do, do we, do you know?
Not with the dune re-nourishment, no. And those places that you used to be able to see it, you don't see it anymore unless there's a certain end zone, so 16th, even 16th, you can't see it because there's a big swell of sand before you go onto the flatter part of the beach.
Yeah. Well, and that's the challenge, because, for example, in Neptune Beach, the benches that I'm very familiar with, the dune re-nourishment has gone really well there, and it's, it's unbelievable how high the dune is now, and, and you possibly could have seen the ocean at one time from the bench there. So, I, I mean, I agree with everyone else that I think it really needs, we need to identify some very specific locations where they can go. And, yeah, I guess I have, I'd like to, I'd like to get more information about how doable it would be to, to do a bench on a walkover. I don't know if Public Works looked into that at all.
No, I'm under the impression that, oh, I'm sorry, Dennis.
Sorry, I'm, I'm here, but I'm not going to turn my camera on, but, so I can tell you that we've got three of the ADAs that we have completely done now, and we have eight more that we have the designs completed for that we will start building in, at the end of turtle season. So obviously, we're not going to start in the next six days, but we will be starting November 1. So to change any of those would almost be an act of Congress at this point in time, simply because those are all at DEP permitting. So the plans could not probably realistically be changed on those eight. Beyond those specific 11 that I'm just talking about right now, which are the three that are done and the eight that are scheduled to be done this fall, we could begin to include that as part of the design parameters, to know that, that, you know, we wanted it bumped out at the top on the flat part to incorporate one, two, three benches. I mean, I don't know that that would be beyond the design in some places. Keep in mind, in some places, we have a very limited footprint as to how wide we can cross that dune. Some of these are 10-foot, like Chet was talking about, just would not be really possible to put a platform without being outside of our easement. But I think that's something we could look at coordinating and, and putting into the engineering specs going forward, if that's, if that's the direction that the Council would like to go, we could do that. The same thing that Mr. Petites is doing with the, the park benches elsewhere, too. We could always incorporate placing the benches without the name tags on them, and then later on, as people adopted them, you know, add the name tag to them, you know, so that, because obviously, we don't want to build a big decking area and then not have the benches to put in there regardless. That would be my thoughts.
Well, you know, and I want to say that one of the walkovers in Neptune Beach, and it might be the Hopkins Street one, in the, you know, how they cut back, the walkovers cut back, in the cutback of the, of this one, they, I believe, in that end, they do have like a little platform for some seating, so people can sit there in that little turn, in the turn of the walkover. So, I mean, I, I wonder if that, is that what we would probably consider doing, how we would want to incorporate it into a walkover?
That's more in line with what I was thinking of, not installing benches on a platform, but having a little built-in seat that would have a plaque on it. But I don't know what the cost differential would be, and the city would have to take that upfront, and then have the money later on if somebody wishes to memorialize, have the plaque. And so before we have staff go out and get the cost analysis of how, what's the differential between the straight walkover and the one with the seating area, we need, I need, I was asked to get Council feedback on whether this is a direction you all would be interested in finding out more information on.
Well, I personally, I personally would be interested in maybe getting more information about, you know, what it would involve and what it would, what it would cost maybe to add that bench at the end, you know, in the, like I said, in the tur, in the cutback area of the, of the walkover, because that seems like a really, really reasonable place to put, put it, and we could, we could potentially do, I love what Dennis said, go ahead and put some in, and then if somebody wants to memorialize somebody, then, you know, then that location is, is available. I would like that idea. The other, the only other question that I had is what about Oceanfront Park? Are there any locations in Oceanfront Park? Because I know we've got the Veterans Memorial there, seems like, and we've got benches there, and, you know, I know we chose that location because, you know, it is so close to the ocean. Not sure that you can see the ocean from those benches, though, but just curious if we have any locations there at Oceanfront Park that could have some visibility to the ocean? Do we know?
We're, we're happy to look into that and go to each of the access points and identify which ones would be better for benches to be placed there. Ultimately, our plan is to have not only, you know, west side access points identified, if that's what Council wants, but all of our parks to be mapped out and have our available benches and trees to be adopted in an aerial view to help streamline this whole process, because we want it to be successful.
Okay, thank you.
Has any of the other 11 areas that we had originally designated, has anybody selected those and put benches in those areas? I mean, is there a demand for this? Or is there?
Right now, under the current policy, we've had 11 benches adopted. In the last week, I've had one tree and one bench adopted. I think that will be getting more traction soon, because I'm working with Jacob on marketing this program, so we're going to breathe some life into it.
Good deal. Are you getting the trees for free from the city of Jacksonville?
You sure are. Trevor's working with Richard from the Tree Commission on that.
Yep, Ricky's a good guy.
Yeah, yeah, he is. I got to meet him this weekend.
Yep.
And they're going to help identify the best native trees per park and where we can place them, where it will be the most successful for us, and aesthetically pleasing.
Absolutely. Okay, that's great. Thanks.
Counselor Maythor?
Yes, to answer Counselor Sandy Godey, I think the only access point where you have a similar view to the one you're talking about in Atlantic Beach, on 19th Street, I want to say it's right on Seagate. I think it's, what, 18th or 19th, whatever avenue on the north end of Jacksonville, there's a big drop, and I know cars usually drop the jet skis out there, and that's the only access point I could think of where a bench might be adequate as to what you were talking about, with the, with the, has the, the ocean view and everything. That's the only access point I could think of.
I think the problem with that location might be the fact that the lifeguards use that to, to access the beach, and it might not be a good location for a bench, because it might actually obstruct the lifeguard trucks being able to go on and off the beach there. I don't know.
And it's also a beach end, and the proposal is to not have them on the beach ends, so it'd be to be on where cars are not.
Okay.
Anyone else? I don't see any other hands raised. Anyone have any additional comments? Okay, so it sounds like in terms of direction, you all are asking for some additional information as to the new locations and various other components of the proposed expansion of the project.
And a possible cost different, difference? How much, if we were to do the, the dune walkover ones, what would be the cost difference? I guess between a platform one, one that just has a seating area built into a walkover versus just the regular walkover?
I would, I would make one additional quick comment, and try to defer away from incorporating a wooden bench as part of the construction and design process, and I think mainly aimed at the ongoing maintenance and the issues we already have with screws popping up and splinters and whatnot. My desire would be, even if it is at the My desire would be, uh, even if it is at the, at the, uh, at the turnaround area, to incorporate a place for, uh, Jason to still utilize one of the metal benches that he is installing, to have those installed, so that we do kind of maintain, uh, a, a uniformity amongst his program. Not to try to minimize costs or have somebody say, well, you know, I can do a wooden one at the beach end for half the price. So that's what I want to do, but then that's got way more maintenance involved in it. So I can pursue both ways, try to look forward. I don't know if I can come up with a cost, cost differential for altering, uh, the walkovers based on it, um, because it would have to kind of almost just be the design from the very beginning that says, we are going to want to try to incorporate these at particular locations or at every single crossover, so that we got a design, as we design eight of these every single year, uh, we can incorporate that. But that would be my two cents. I don't know that I would want to, to really incorporate a wooden structure as part of the design of it, as opposed to just a place for a freestanding metal bench.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis. Uh, I think that staff has the direction we need. Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, uh, Huguenot Tennis Center. Jason?
So, um, to give a bit of more background to what we provided in the memorandum, uh, a couple of years ago, council approved the construction of an eighth tennis court. At that time, we assumed that we could replace the current basketball court, uh, with that eighth tennis court. And we received a lot of feedback to say that basketball court was heavily used and for us not to do that. So the alternative plan that we put into this year's budget was to move the basketball court to the south end of the park and place the eighth tennis court, uh, where the current basketball court is. Uh, subsequent to that, we had a few community meetings where we received further feedback. Uh, ultimately, they, the community did not want to impede the footprint or take away green space. And so we looked at the problem and thought, how do we solve the eighth court, the need for the eighth court? And, uh, we've come up with a solution that says if we can increase the hours at the tennis center, we can accommodate the demand for that capacity. And I just want to explain to council why, you know, the, the, the capacity is, the, the need for the capacity rather is there. It's not so much, you know, the couple that show up at the tennis center and ask for a court. The programs at the, at the center have grown to where we've got increasingly more teams. And so what we have in the morning hours from nine until 12 is a lot of match play where the teams play. And so for the teams to practice, they would come in the evenings, and that's when we don't have the capacity. So by increasing the hours in the morning, a couple of hours, it allows them that ability to, to practice and, and therefore accommodates the demand. So we think that this is a workable solution. We're, uh, asking Council A if you agree with that and not do the construction of the eighth court and rather increase the hours. To do that would require an amendment to the recently adopted, uh, Code of Ordinances, Chapter 20 specifically, uh, that codifies the hours of operation. And so we're asking, uh, Council A if you agree with increasing the hours at the tennis center. And B, uh, that can be accommodated by an amendment to the Code of Ordinances such that, uh, instead of, uh, coming back by ordinance to amend any hours, the, it would simply be modified so that council could approve, uh, any change in hours, uh, in the future.
Councilor Golding?
Jason, um, so help me understand with the tennis center, how is that financially, how, how does the tennis center stand? You know, you know, like the golf course, we know the golf course is doing well. You know, the, the golfers, their, their, what they pay helps to cover the cost of everything. So, you know, with the tennis center, will, with the additional hours, will there, will the tennis players be paying to play these additional hours? And how does that, you know, how, how does that financially, you know, look as far as like with the additional hours that we'll be paying for staff?
So, Council Golding, to compare the golf course to the tennis center is, uh, is a different comparison, is like apples to oranges, only because the golf course is operated on an enterprise fund, and it is intended to pay for itself, whereas the tennis center is operated through the general fund. Our goal ultimately is to reduce the deficit, uh, if you will, every year. So I'm going to say that roughly two-thirds of the revenue that we receive at the tennis center pays for the operating costs. So it costs the city from the general fund approximately a third of the operation. So to answer your question, how does the eighth or the increase in, in hours, it would be a further expense to the general fund that we wouldn't typically have any more revenue to offset it because of the current demand. Should we grow any further than that, you know, would offset those hours? Again, we're asking for a nominal two hours a day, five hours, uh, or 10 hours a week, rather. And we feel, you know, foregoing the huge investment of an eighth court, it would take roughly 10 years to, to get to that point.
Councilor Dumont?
Thank you. Um, along the same lines with Sandy. So if we are, if we need to extend the hours into the morning and pay for somebody to be there, that, doesn't that just mean more people are playing? And I don't know how the fee structure works with this tennis, the tennis leagues. Do they play a, pay a flat rate? Do they pay per round? Um, I'm not sure how that structure works.
So there are really three revenue streams at the tennis center. The, the first, and I'm not going to say more common, it's now become the least common, is if two people show up and they want court time, and they'll pay their court fee. Uh, the other streams are, uh, is actually four. The roster fees, which is teams registering to play at Huguenot Tennis Center as a team representing Huguenot, and that's a roster fee. Then, um, we have a tennis pro that gives tennis lessons. And from those lessons, the city receives a percentage of the fee. But how the hours are not going to in, uh, increase the number of players. It's just going to give the demand, satisfy the demand for those teams that want practice hours. So those teams have already played, paid their roster fee for the season. And they're limited in the practice hours by the availability of the courts. And so by increasing the hours gives them more availability to the court, to court time.
Okay, thank you. And, um, thank you for figuring out a way to not build an eighth tennis court by changing, to that, by adding two hours to the day. The neighbors really appreciate it. The basketball players really appreciate it. Uh, so well done there.
Thank you. Win-win, I think, for all, but that's collectively still putting their heads together.
Um, Jason, I want to be clear, we are, we currently have the hours codified by ordinance, correct?
That's correct.
And we, are we recommending that we take the hours out of the code so that it would be more discretionary?
Um, yes, we are recommending that we amend, uh, the code to more simplified language that allows the hours of operation to be changed, uh, by council rather than, uh, by ordinance.
Okay. Is there a consensus among council for us to bring back an ordinance for the first reading? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason, before you pop off, I've got, um, a quick question. Have you gotten feedback from the teams on whether this two hours in the morning is going to satisfy their, um, practice time?
Good question, yes. We did talk with them. They're very happy that we're making accommodation, and they think that it would work very well. The other thing that we are going to do that's not in the memorandum is, um, allow more hours in the winter time during the peak hours of, of noon, so to speak. Cause right now, you know, the, the center closes at 12 and opens at 3:00. So without any court attendant, we would allow access to those courts on the east side. Um, and that wouldn't be a burden on any cost to us, but we'll give them more playing time.
And second question is, um, I know that there was a lot of community involvement in, in wanting to, to get this passed, but is the community okay with the additional noise from the tennis at 7:00 AM, um, as opposed to 9:00? Cause, um, as anybody that's been around a tennis court knows, it's not the quietest of sports. So just wanted to follow up with that.
So the community, to answer your question, Council Stokes, is, uh, yes, we collaborated with them with, uh, and they're in agreement that this, this should work, but in terms of the noise, we'd have to wait and see. I do know that there are some people around there that have complained that beach racers start too early in the morning. So that may be a problem. Um, but hopefully, we can come up with a solution if it is.
Thank you.
I don't see any, any additional hands raised, so we'll move to the next topic. Which happens to be, uh, mine. We would like to get your input and feedback into the candidate screening process for the, uh, open city attorney position and the interview process. The job is, is currently posted, scheduled to close on May 14th. We, if, for those of you who participated in the process in 2019, we are, uh, presenting in this memo, a similar process whereby the city manager and I will review all of the candidates who apply and screen for minimum qualifications only, which is graduation with a Juris Doctorate degree, Florida Bar Association active membership in the Florida Bar, and a minimum of 10 years total municipal experience, or five years, uh, as long as it is specific to Florida municipal attorney experience. So we would then present to you all of the candidates who meet those qualifications. And then you all will, we'll hold a special council meeting to review those candidates and select from those candidates the ones that you would like to bring in for, you could select to do either virtual interviews or face-to-face interviews, or you could give us direction to go back out and re-advertise, or to extend the, the post, the job posting out further, if you feel that you don't have a large enough pool of qualified candidates. And then from that point, we are assuming in this memo that you all would be bringing individuals in for face-to-face interviews. The process that we have used in the past and that, um, we would recommend if, if council is in agreement, is that you all would interview individually each of the candidates, and then as a group, each one candidate at a time would come before the entire council as a group in a public interview, a public meeting that would be observed and attended by the public. And then from that point, uh, we would enter into negotiations. And that is where, along with the interview and the candidate screening process, we really are asking for some guidance from council as to how you would like to manage those negotiations. We have given you a, several different options. You could decide to appoint one council member to represent the council in the negotiations with the individual, with your first choice candidate. Or you could direct the city manager to manage that process, the negotiation process. Or we could hire an outside counsel to help us with that negotiation process with the, uh, employment agreement. So I'll stop there for a moment and ask if I can get some, some feedback on the initial couple of points that we've talked about, the candidate, the screening process, and then the negotiation process for the employment agreement. Councilor Dumont?
Does our new HR person have experience with, um, attorney, city attorney contracts? I don't know what her background, her, his or her background is.
Her background, she starts on May 3rd. She starts this coming Monday. Um, I don't know how much experience she has in actually negotiating those contracts. I personally have some experience in that, and, um, so does the city manager. So, um, if that is something that you all would like administration to either, either delegate to us or have us just be involved in, uh, we would work closely with the new HR director to help manage that process.
Thank you.
Councilor Golding?
Um, I would just say that, um, I felt that the process that we used, um, when we hired Mr. Ambrosio, as far as the interview process, um, that I was, you know, I was fine with that. And I, you know, that's pretty much what you've proposed, so I just want to give you that feedback. I did want to comment about the, um, negotiation piece. The IMLA, which is the International Municipal Lawyers Association, um, they have a, a model employment agreement for city attorneys. And this is something that I, you probably remember, Karen. I pulled it up back when we were hiring Chris and, uh, shared it with Mr. Vogel saying, and made some suggestions based on some of the things that were mentioned in that. And I was going back through it, and I found that they had, um, they had a section that talks about the agreement. And I just wanted to share this information real quick, because, um, maybe this will help us in our discussion on this. But it says, "This agreement creates an attorney-client relationship and should be governed by the lawyer's rules of professional conduct or such other ethical guidelines as have been adopted in the state." Then, "In a case involving the attorney for the city of Miami, a Florida court concluded that the city attorney had a duty to advise the governing board to seek independent advice while renegotiating his contract. That court also found that the resulting agreement was ambiguous and not clearly explained to the governing body. So IMLA recommends that the governing body seek legal counsel to conduct an independent review of an agreement to hire its attorney, just as it should in negotiating and adopting contracts with its other officials." So, you know, I realize that we have an agreement already that we used with Mr. Ambrosio, but my thinking, and Ms. Dumont brought this up, I think, in our last briefing or, uh, that she felt that we might want to hire outside legal counsel. So my thinking is that if we get into a situation where this attorney that we're trying to hire is proposing some things that are outside of the agreement that we had with Mr. Ambrosio, that I feel like we may be in a better position if we have outside legal counsel to advise us on any, you know, and, and help us through that negotiation process. So I'm just basing that off of, you know, the recommendation from IMLA. So that's my thinking, and want to put that out there for the rest of the council to consider.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Councilor Maythor?
Yes, Councilmember Golding took the words out of my mouth, uh, but I agree with her. That's it.
And Vice Mayor Nichols?
The last contract, um, the council member at the time that negotiated it was a, I mean, he's an attorney as well. And, you know, I feel like the, it was pretty good. I have no problem with another attorney. I mean, obviously, we'll have, we have, uh, we have contracts with, with multiple that I don't have a problem with somebody, um, reviewing it. The city attorney does work directly for the city council. I'm a little concerned about conflict of interest and stuff with, if the city manager is going to be involved. I'm not completely opposed with HR being involved a little bit, and maybe you, but I think somebody on council really needs to take the lead with that negotiation, just to keep it a little bit separate.
Okay.
But the, but the method of the interview process, I But the, but the method of the interview process, I thought was fine last time.
Okay. And Counselor Dumont?
I am, I agree with Corey that um it's awkward for Mike to do it because Mike's not hiring that individual, uh, so that it ends up being a weird dynamic there. Um, an outside lawyer would really be the best option, but I'm not sure about having a council member be the point person just because none of us have the skill set required. We've all done, a lot of us have done contracts before, but not a legal, uh, not a legal employment contract.
Um, if I could.
I mean, that's not necessarily, that's not necessarily true, but I mean, I've, I've done plenty of them. I have multiple contract with attorneys and you know, I mean, I don't, I don't mind reviewing it.
A city attorney, a city attorney, a municipal attorney.
I got you. We have a good base to go by, but I, but I mean, I don't want somebody from the outside, especially an outside attorney necessarily taking the lead on it. Um, I'm not, I don't, not opposed to them being involved and reviewing it to make sure it's a legal process and it meets the standards uh once we get somewhere on it. But I, I think that the, I don't want somebody outside really necessarily doing the full negotiations.
It would need to be approved by council, so it's not like the outside attorney would just do everything and we'd, we'd give parameters. He or she would do the work and then come back with us and then it's a regular negotiation going on.
So I, I am hearing, I think, a consensus that we, we would want to engage an outside attorney for legal advice on the, on the employment agreement. And we certainly have a, a couple of very capable employment lawyers on not on retainer, but uh that we have agreements with currently. Um, that we could make a recommendation to council if that's what you all wish to do. But it sounds like um we don't yet have a consensus on who's, if if you want to appoint an individual contact among council or if you want us to bring decisions back to council as a whole.
Sure. And I thi- I think we can pursue, I think we can do it in a step-by-step process. I think, you know, doing the employment, doing the interviews and then um when there's other, you know, we can address the other issue when it gets closer. And we can have a better understanding of it.
Okay. And I would suggest, um, regardless of what you all decide to do in that respect, um, I, it will require some interaction with with staff, obviously. And our new HR director being so new that I am more than willing to to participate in that process in whichever, whatever capacity council would like me to. Okay. Uh, Ms. Golding, did you have revisit?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to say that um you, you kind of, you hit the, the point that I was gonna make that um the new HR director, you know, might be a little, a little too new. I would be comfortable with you taking on because you've done a lot of, you know, a lot of negotiations in the past. Um, and you're pretty, I think you're, you understand, you know, the process and, and I think we would, I, I personally would be comfortable with you doing that if that's, if that's something that you'd be willing to do.
Certainly. I, I will, whatever council asks and whatever you all agree uh in terms of the process. Well, I will work with, with you all and we'll, we'll make it work. But as um Counselor Nichols said, we don't have to make those decisions today. Um, it does sound like um you all would be comfortable with an outside attorney agreeing, uh, reviewing the contract, which totally support that. So, so we'll revisit um as we move through the process until council is comfortable that you all have a process that will work for you. Um, the next item, number five on the memo relates to the employment agreement. This is just for your consideration. Again, no decisions have to be made today. But we are um suggesting that council may want to make changes to that employment agreement uh in terms of uh annual evaluation, termination processes in uh corporation of the Code of Ethics, which was not in effect when the last agreement was entered into. Um, but specifically, we have some recommendations that we would like for you all to, to look at and consider. Um, section five of the previous employment agreement is now in conflict with the new amended city charter. So we, we would need to look at that carefully. That deals with the termination process. Um, and then section ten of the agreement, um, we have an opt-out provision in our general employees pension plan for department heads and city administration. They're able to opt out. Uh, the last, the previous agreement and and other agreements for uh city manager and department heads before it offered a choice for the employee if they opt out to have that money, either go into a deferred compensation plan or into a private bank account. Um, for your consideration, we want to um point out that if it, if it's going from the beginning into a private bank account, it is not deferred compensation. It is then an additional pay which increases the amount of their, effectively increases the amount of their salary. It's taxable income. And um we, for our department directors coming in, we have changed that to require the, the money, if they opt out of the pension plan, we require it to go into our four fifty-seven deferred compensation plan until that plan, unless that plan is maxed out within a calendar year, and then the remainder can go into uh and a, a bank account of their choice. Uh, we just feel that that is more consistent with the benefit that we're providing to all of the other employees and those who do not opt out of the pension plan, they're receiving deferred compensation. So that's just uh for something for your consideration before we get to the final steps of the employment agreement. Uh, and other than that, I think we have enough to at least move forward. You all are comfortable with the screening process. And we would, we will move through that and then schedule that first meeting. And then we can further discuss at that meeting how we go into the next steps. Okay?
Hey Karen, I just had, I just had a comment. Um, I was gonna, I wanted to mention that I do support all the recommendations that, that you guys are making. And um, you know, I, I just wanted, for the sake of the new council members, um, the, the agreement required that the city attorney attend some of our board meetings, like the planning commission meetings. Um, but then this, our, uh, Mr. Ambrosio requested that that be amended on his first review. And I, I just want to mention that I still support that we require that the city attorney go to the planning commission meetings because of the the issue with the planning commission meetings is that oftentimes there are, there is an attorney there representing the applicant that's going before the planning commission. And our planning commission members, if we don't have our own attorney there, our planning commission members are at a disadvantage. And we've run into issues, especially because a lot of land regulations go through the planning commission. We've ended up in situations where we've had uh legal challenges. And I, I still think that it's important that we um, to begin with, that we ask that city, the, the city attorney that we hire to plan to go to the planning commission meetings in addition to the city council meetings. Um, and then, you know, I, I don't know about the other meetings. I think planning commission at a minimum. So I just wanted to share that with the new council members, just so that um you could put that on your radar and at least be thinking about it. I personally spoke with some of the planning commission members um in the past, and they've all expressed how uh it helped them a lot, having the city attorney at the planning commission meetings. Um, because if there were ever any questions, they had somebody that could answer those questions. And uh, like I said before, I think it's um the issues that come before the planning commission are are issues that could put, that could put us into legal challenges. And so I think it's important that we have somebody, have our city attorney there. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Well, also, I mean, the city council, the council did vote to leave that to the discretion of the attorney at the time. I mean, if you want to bring it back up, I mean, I think it's fine, but we did already vote on that.
And Counselor Dumont?
We voted on that contract, not the new contract, so that's something that we can discuss when we are in negotiations for the new contract. The only um challenge that may happen is planning commission is on the second and fourth Mondays of the month, and our briefings are on the second and fourth Mondays of the month. The flip side is planning commission is at seven and our briefings start at five thirty, so um if we get done by seven, the attorney can just slide on over into the uh planning commission meeting. But that might be one of the only challenges is that they're both on the Mondays.
Thank you. And uh just for your information, when we wrote the, the current job description and job posting, we included information that said that the uh evening hours are required to attend all council meetings and will be required to attend board and commission meetings as directed by council. So that we gave you all that flexibility to, to make those decisions.
Sure. I just don't think it's necessary to have a requirement. I mean, at all meetings, if there's not something that looks like there's gonna be a pending, a pending issue, that there's gotta be some discretion involved. I just don't want to make it a mandatory.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Golding, is your hand still up or okay?
Uh, yeah, well, and I, we discussed this before, and I know uh council member Dumont served on the planning commission. And I think the challenge um vice mayor is just that um you may think that, the, the city attorney may think that there's not anything that would be a concern. But then in the meeting, there could be, you know, there could be something that comes up. So it, it's, it's a, I, I, I find that it could be challenging for a city attorney to potentially, you know, have, have that kind of um, I don't know. In, you know, know if there's gonna be an issue that comes up at the meeting. So that's, that's my only comment I wanted to add.
And I mean, I'm not opposed to bringing up the conversation again, but I was just making a note that we did vote on it before. And it was vote, it was voted to leave some discretion there.
Okay, I see no other uh hands raised, so I think that gives us enough direction to at least get through the first few steps of the process. Um, and that brings us to future briefing topics, which is uh, is for you all. If you have, anyone has any um, any suggestions, anything you want to bring up and see if there's a consensus among council. Uh, Counselor Golding?
This is not a new item, but just a question, um, because the last ti- the last time we had this, I, this topic on the agenda, I brought up the uh Dune Protection that um Coach Brown wanted to uh work with us on. And my understanding was that that would be brought before uh, before us at a future briefing. So do we know what date that that may be coming before us?
That is scheduled for the May tenth briefing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, and we also have from, from, I think, uh, previous recommendations, we are discussing the Beach Marine potential project on May twenty-fourth. Does anyone else have any?
Do we have one um about a dock issue um coming up on, in May? I was told a while back that we should have one coming up.
A dock issue?
Yeah, somebody's got a dock um that they, that they're working with trying to get built and there's an issue about it being partly on our land, so they need an easement. Um, and they were told by Mike that it would be on a May briefing, I think the May tenth briefing, maybe. I'd have to dig back through my emails to find it, but I was told it was gonna be on a briefing.
So um, Chet, I've been talking to Mike about that because the citizen that spoke to you spoke to me as well about that. And it's not about a dock. Um, specifically, it's about dredging.
Dredging.
Uh, they, yeah, they want, they want to dredge a channel. Um, and this is, I wasn't gonna bring it up tonight because Karen has not been in the loop, I don't think, and I don't think that she knows what's going on with that. And I've been talking to Mike, so I was hoping that it could be brought up whenever Mike was on the briefing. Um, but yeah, so my, it is not, it is not gonna be coming up on May tenth because Mike feels that it's something that the, that the city council, it's a policy decision for the city council. And he, he would prefer that this come, that this be discussed after we've done some strategic planning. And just to explain to the rest of the council, this, there is a marshland that City of Jacksonville Beach property that would be impacted by this, by this dredging that the citizens would like to do. Um, and so that's why Mike feels that it needs to be a policy directive from the council.
Yeah, and that's why I was thinking that we were gonna discuss it at the briefing, so um, thanks for the quick update. I'm, I'm just wanted to, since it's coming up, I, well, not anymore, but.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any future briefing topics for discussion? Seeing none. Um, the last item on the agenda is a committee assignment report. And again, I think that is up to you all, if anyone has any reports on any of the uh committee activities that you're assigned to. And I'm seeing none, I get that.
Or you'll be getting a four-page word document from me soon um about Blue Zones. I sent it today, so um, I'm sure as soon as it gets reviewed and acceptable to get out to everybody, um, that you'll be seeing that, so.
Excellent. I'm actually looking forward to that.
Well, I appreciate that. It was, it was actually pretty fun to, to write, so I, I got back to my old college days of writing policy stuff, so.
Good, get a little rusty. Okay, anybody else? All right, is there any other business before we adjourn? I think that's a record. It's six forty. And I will adjourn the meeting. See you all later.